I'd like to call to order Bristol, Virginia City Council for April 9th, 2019. Please join me for a moment of silence. Please join me for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a pretty long agenda tonight. First presentation of the budget by the city managers tonight, so glad to see a good crowd here. First thing I want to say is I want to thank Travis Campbell and his family for what happened out in Beaver Creek. I don't know if y'all noticed, there was a car went in the creek and he happened to be driving down Old Avenue Highway and stopped and got out and went in the creek and rescued the baby and the family and his kids got out and joined in. And I know that creek's cold and I've got a personal story because my mom drove me in the creek. Now, my mom power rode back when I was going to kindergarten, so I know, I was in a car in that creek. So Travis went in there, didn't have to, saved the day. Police showed up, thanked the police force and the fire for showing up, but that could have been a very bad thing. Baby in the car, you know, the water was rushing in, so hats off to Travis and the family for what they did. So with that, I'll ask the city engineer and the city manager, please look at the guardrails along that road. If you notice, they kind of stop and they go, you know, they go around the curve, but then they kind of stop midway down the straightaway. So I think you need to look at extending those all the way to the entrance of the Ball Corporation. So I think that would have prevented at least two, I think there was another accident there, what, about six months ago? Something similar kind of happened, so we need to get those guardrails fixed. But with that, I think a good day, good summer day today, nice and warm. It'll probably get warmer in here as we get into the budget talks, I'm sure. They're always lively, but that's part of the process. So again, glad everybody showed up, so make sure you sign up on the back if you've got anything you want to come up and talk to council about this evening. With that, any other council comments? All right, city manager?
No, I just want to mention the same thing that you just mentioned in regards to that accident last night. Thank goodness that accident didn't happen about a month ago when we had all the rain and because it could have been a different outcome. I know Mr. Hartley had mentioned this morning to myself and Mr. Wingard about looking at different options there and we'll put that before the Transportation Safety Commission and try to come up with some solutions for that area. I want to let everyone know the animal shelter is now open. That has been a long process and it is open over on Shakesville Road and it seems to be going well. There's just a few finishing touches that we need to do for it to be completely perfect, but it's as close to perfect as it can get and still house animals right now. So I'm really proud of that staff that put everything together. I know the police department, they've worked tirelessly and along with their public works department to get that together. And with that, let's go ahead and start this agenda.
All right. All right, with that, we've got matters to be presented, public non-agenda items. We've got three people signed up here. I'm assuming it's all non-agenda, maybe budget items. Anyway, Jack Johnson? Jack Johnson's on the list, you want to?
I live at 209 Sunrise Street, I am a voter. This week, or last week we was here, we had some issues over trash pickup and stuff. And I rode around the city today and on my street alone, I mean, on streets, adjacent to my street, there's three piles that hadn't been picked up, it's been laying there for a week. Kevin says one of them is illegal, the other three, you know. Why is it we can't pick up our trash on our trash days? Can you answer that? My next question, because I ended up paying somebody to haul my debris. And I've got crews set up this weekend, we do yard work, so they'll haul it off to the farm. First of all, can I opt out of this system? And second, can I bring a contractor that can do it cheaper in?
All right, questions, city manager?
At this time, you cannot opt out of the system. It's a requirement that the, everyone that has electric service in the city also pay for trash service. Now, I guess if you wanted to pay for something and not receive it, we could do that as well, but at this time, the way our ordinance read, everyone in the city that has electric service will also be billed for trash services.
Because that's the city charter way it's set up?
That's an ordinance, that's correct.
A hundred years ago.
No, sir. That's been done recently. It's an ordinance since 1990.
Before y'all do a raise, y'all need to correct these problems that me and Kevin has talked about. I mean, folks, if it takes getting a petition to tell you not to do this, I will do it. I have got plenty of time now.
We are looking at the entire process of how we pick up citizens' trash and that's something that we're reviewing. Whether or not it'll be reviewed in time before not a rate increase takes effect, I can't tell you, but the plan is right now to have a rate increase in effect by July 1st.
Okay, if your ordinance does not change, I will circle a petition against this. And you know me, I get it done. I'm not, you know, throwing out any threats, I'm just stating fact. This will take place, if I don't see it happening.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
All right, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
All right, next person, Jackie Naflin?
Uh, Kim, like we did at the last meeting, could I wait to answer the proposal?
Okay. Keith Perdigan?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, just want to take a brief second to update you. About 12 days ago, we had a consultant from Virginia Tech come in to talk about the very important relationship between school facility condition and student learning. It was a great, it was a great program. I think it is on video now, if you would like to view that. Thank Mr. Hartley for showing up. I know others were unable to attend, but it's well worth your time to give it a look. At that same day, we actually had members of the facilities team from the Virginia Department of Education, they were here for three days, they toured all of our facilities, and they have given us their initial verbal preliminary report. And unfortunately, our facilities are actually in worse shape than what we thought. We'll be getting that formal report in a written form later this month, but I tell you that, only tell you this, you know, we, I asked Mr. Hartley to share with you an invitation from our school board to come together and maybe work with a moderator so that we can make progress towards improving our facilities, whether it's with a new construction or with renovations. And I would like to formally extend that invitation to the full city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that's, everybody's signed up for that. All right, so we'll have the regular agenda items, so the planning commission will call itself to order and then...
Thank you. This is the April 9th meeting of the planning commission, which I now call to order.
All right, thank you. All right, first thing we've got on the regular agenda items, are there any changes before I get into this item? First item is consider proclamation support of National Library Week, staff report.
Counsel, this is a proclamation that is before you that discusses, this is National Library Week and we have long recognized the importance of libraries in our communities and how libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed of things that are going out, not only throughout their community, but throughout the nation as well. And we are here just designating this proclamation that we support national, the library here in Bristol and libraries across the nation.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Says the proclamation designating April 7th through 13th, 2019 as National Library Week, whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but they do for people and with people and whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, towns, schools, and campuses and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect and whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise and whereas libraries, which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy and whereas libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues and whereas librarians and library workers partners with our other civic organizations, make sure our community needs are being met and whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information and whereas libraries are a source of, for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or socioeconomic status, offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore be it resolved that cities of Bristol, Virginia, Bristol, Tennessee proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through 13th, 2019, the second day of April, 2019.
I move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Go ahead, Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hartley, any discussion? All right, please call to roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
All right, item two, consider joint public hearing with planning commission on proposed future land use, map revisions to the comprehensive plans. First item, open the meeting, planning commission to open their hearing and meeting.
Declare this planning commission meeting officially open.
All right, staff comment?
Mayor, council members, and chairman and planning commission members. As you all recall, we adopted, you all with the recommendation, planning commission adopted the city comprehensive plan two years ago and the stipulation at the time was that it needs to be reviewed once a year. Last year, we did a, I don't want to say precursory, but we reviewed the implementation matrix and gave a report to the council on that. We didn't make any, propose any changes. This year, of course, one of the major things the planning commission's been working on, which was a recommendation in the comp plan, was to really re-hall the city zoning ordinance, which we have been, planning commission has been spending many hours on that and will hopefully later this year come back with some changes on, with the zoning code. But in looking at our land use map for guidance on the zoning, we realize even in two years, there's some things that have come forward that weren't happening at the time, that we need to look at making some changes on our future land use map. That is not the zoning map, but it is a future land use map that looks at 10, 20 years down the road, what's the desired land use for this area of the city or that area. So the planning commission, after a couple work sessions in, over the last two months, have some changes that they'd like to propose. Any change in the comprehensive plan does require a public hearing, that's the purpose of tonight. I do have slides to go over those changes because it's new to you all and I want you to know what they've been working on, but also as well as the public to be aware. If you all, I know it's a long agenda tonight, but if you bear with me, I'll try to go through these pretty quickly. There's six different areas of the city that are being proposed to have some slight revisions on the future land use map. Get my pointer going here. Just, this is the overall future land use map. It's page 32 as a part of the comprehensive plan. There's a larger version here on the floor. And you can see, I actually would like to read real quick what it says at the top. The land use plan provides policies and identifies appropriate land uses for the city of Bristol. It is based on sound community planning principles as well as several factors and influences, including the vision, goals, and objectives identified by the Bristol community, community outreach, market and demographic analysis, and an assessment of existing conditions. And the plan identifies 15 desired future land use categories detailed below. You notice existing conditions, there's some things that even in two years have changed that planning commission wanted to relook at. And so just quickly, what we have here are a set of six maps. The upper part is the existing land use map and the lower part with the noted revisions is what's being proposed to be changed. This is the exit one, Gate City Highway area. We devoted some time two years ago to the reuse of the mall property and what it could be. We really didn't do anything about potential land use changes other than the mall. And so now that there have been some proposed reuses of the mall, the planning commission is recommending some additional commercial development on Gate City Highway. The red is general commercial and the lighter red is local commercial on Island Road. So that would be the change. If you compare this with this one, you can see those areas there. Again, this is not changing the zoning, it's just the future desired land use. Next, we have the Pittstown Road and Island Road area. And again, some things has sort of changed since we looked at this two or three years ago is with the proposed Mendota Trail and Trailhead. Most of all, that area around it was noted as residential, a little bit of commercial there. But, so now the proposed changes have the Trailhead area green, like open space park, and looking at some additional commercial that we hope would develop associated with the trail as well as this area between Pittstown Road and Island Road. That category there is single-family attached. There's already some townhouse, sort of duplex developments in there and we don't have a lot of that proposed on our land use map and that is being recommended as potential good use for that area in between. Exit five area, again, we spent time with, of course, the falls and the area crossing the falls, but this is an area associated with exit five that has a lot of visibility along 81. And so if you see the changes, compare this to here, is additional red being commercial, potentially along Long Crescent Road. There's already a little bit of commercial development there, not a whole lot, but it's certainly very visible from the interstate and accessible to exit five. So right here would be the proposed changes. The Bonham Road area, also, there was a little bit of a change. This was designated as office space back when it was the Sprint Call Center. And then, of course, church now occupies that building and there are other businesses on Commerce Court. So the recommendation would be changed, instead of just office, this is local commercial as well as a little bit of a connection here at the intersection of Linden Drive and Bonham Road, which was residential previously. So these are changes here. There's two more. And this is William Street East, Mary Street area. Again, this is the, I guess going way back, I'm not sure how far back that industrial area goes, but way back. It was very old industrial area at one time with Visidor and Reclaim Resources. And this site right here, as well as along the creek here, are really, no longer really suitable for modern manufacturing. We had industrial as a land use category and then residential. This blue category is what we call flex and that gives us flexibility in looking at other potential uses you've got. You do have residential in the area, you do have still some viable industrial uses here, but we would like to look at what potentially could be reuses of this. And by categorizing it as flex, it gives us some ability to be creative about what might happen in that area there. So that's the change on this map. This track and this one along the creek here. All this is actually in the flood plain as well, or a lot, a good deal of it is. And the last one is Beacon Road, which is where Permatile is, very close to the Bristol, Tennessee line here on King Mill Pike. And this area was already on the land use map as industrial, but this is just extending that. The darker is heavier industrial, the lighter, that's supposed to be light purple, but is light industrial, closer you get to some of the housing here. So in our need for more industrial land, we felt like this, and the planning commission concurred that this is, this is some other land that could develop industrial. You already have some empty spaces here as well as some operating businesses that are industrial. So I just wanted to give you that overview. I do have paper copies of these maps and, of course, they were in your packet. But today is just the public hearing and the planning commission, at their next meeting, could consider their recommendation after that, back to you all on these. Thank you.
All right, I don't really see anyone signed up for public comment on this item. Did I miss anyone? All right, so with that, you can close your public hearing?
Yes, close the public hearing on that item, thank you.
Okay, item three, consider a joint public hearing with planning commission on special exception application, O2-2019 from Kila Delta LLC for 200 Bob Morrison Boulevard, tax map 25-7-13-Delta for the installation of concrete block making operation in M1 Zone. Please open the hearing.
Okay, we'll open the meeting of the planning commission for that purpose.
All right, staff comment?
Yes, this is a application that we received and the planning commission has already heard and reviewed some of the information about it and has sent it forward for a joint public hearing. The property, sorry, excuse me, is located at 200 Bob Morrison Boulevard. It is basically between Food City and West State Street. It's been a former industrial building there, manufacturing of different kinds have gone on in the past. The applicant is the owner of the property who operates also on site there, the King Commercial Contracting Company, which does civil construction and they use the property for their vehicle servicing, storage, equipment, and their offices. Also taking place in this facility now are some other office buildings. I don't know if you all know that VEC rents office building when they moved from Bristol East, that's where they're located now, oops, sorry, in this building here on the front side. It's a 3.4 acre tract bordered on the east by Bob Morrison Boulevard, of course, and on the west by Susong Branch. The zoning issue is that it is zoned M1, which is light industrial and block making specifically and concrete making are permitted uses in M2 and not M1. So that's the reason for the application, to allow the business here to operate a small concrete plant in which they would be making retaining block, actually for their use. They use that in their construction and they would basically become their own supplier of that. They are not intending to make concrete, there would be concrete trucks going in and out, it's just concrete for their use to make retaining blocks. It would occur in the, the concrete production would occur in the, on this side of the 19,000 square foot warehouse here. And I have some pictures to show that actually they have installed, not operating yet, but have done the preliminary installation of the concrete plant there. This is where they will store their sand and stone aggregate that comes in and all the production of the block will be inside the building here in these molds. This is the example of what they'd be making. Looks like natural stone. And I believe this shows the aerial, where this would take place here on the end of this warehouse at this location. And trucks would enter Bob Morrison Boulevard here. So it has been reviewed by staff. We haven't found any negative impact to the roadway, truck delivery. This roadway is underutilized to begin with and it, so it will not affect service on this road. With the estimated trucks, utility service is sufficient. The only problems identified in the staff report were potential noise and dust. They have been already working with DEQ and a DEQ, I've talked to them, as far as the permit will, they don't anticipate any problems getting their air emissions permit and stormwater on site. I think the only improvements really to the building will be the concrete plant and a garage door here. And they did indicate they'd be employing two more full-time individuals for this operation. It's my staff report.
Thank you. All right, doesn't look like anybody's signed up for public comment on this, unless I want to, okay. Nancy, you want to sign up for this?
I haven't signed up.
Okay, you want to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of council and planning commission, my name is Nancy Marney. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I think one of my perhaps concerns, certainly interest, I don't know which to use, interest or concern, or perhaps both, in the items that have been presented here the last few minutes is the environment, air pollution. Now, the, I am told that the biggest air polluter in the city of Bristol, Virginia is about a half a block from what you're talking about right now. Now, if, and I don't think the city does anything about it, but it's a fact, if one wants to deal with such things. And we also have that god awful whatever it is up there at the dump that never should have been there. All right, now, to get back here, I digressed. The fact of dust particles was brought up here a minute ago. I don't know how in the world you can grind stone without creating dust. Now, maybe they're not going to do much grinding, I don't know how you make concrete blocks, but I know there's a lot of dust. And I think the noise is a legitimate concern. Noise does not stay where it's created. It just plain doesn't. You cannot say, now noise, stay right here over this building, don't you go anywhere else. It would be just like me trying to tell the fire in my fireplace in my house, now don't you, now smoke, you stay right over my house, don't you get out here anywhere else. It doesn't work that way. So therefore, I think that environmental factors should be a very big consideration. How do we expect people either to live in this community or want to come to this community if they can't breathe? Now, I know gracious plenty about allergies. My brother was chief of allergy at Vanderbilt. I know about allergies. And I know what allergies do to people, they make some people rich. Others, they just kill them. Allergies are a very big item, folks. I think this should be looked into very carefully. It's not a matter of being for or against the premise of the idea, but I do think that there are parts of this that should be looked into very, very carefully because once it's built, it's there. But I do think that air pollution in this community is a very big problem. We have the air from the interstates, I know, I smell it on my front porch. We have that whatever it is up there at the dump, I get that in the backyard and in the bedroom. I think that should be, well, of course, ticks on the clock are far more important than content.
Thank you. All right, does planning commission want to address the comments?
So to address some of the concerns that were just mentioned, they're not going to be doing any grinding of stone on premises. They're going to be buying gravel from a rock quarry. So all that activity will be done at an off-site location at a rock quarry. And so as far as grinding, creating dust, or noise, or anything like that, they're not going to be doing anything like that. They're simply running a mixer. They're taking pre-ground stone and putting it with water and sand in a mixer. So there shouldn't be... stone and putting it with water and sand in a mixer. So there shouldn't be any issues of grinding or dust from grinding or noise from grinding or anything like that. They're not going to be doing anything like that on site. They're going to be bringing that gravel in pre-ground from the rock quarry.
Okay, any other comments? All right, I know Department of Environmental Quality's got to give, you know, air permits and the, the right to operate. So they're responsible in the state of Virginia to make sure the environmental items that were brought up are addressed. So there's particular air quality that they got to look at. So once they do their assessment, if they don't pass state requirements, they wouldn't provide the permit for the operation. So, so D E Q is a very important part of the process. So that's got to happen before they operate. All right, with that, I guess the planning commission now has to close your hearing?
Yes, we will do that now.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, you want to take action on this special exception application?
Yes, I suppose so.
So here, you're supposed to take action on this exception?
I wasn't aware of that, but I'll find out.
That was put in there when we thought that it was going to go forward with you all. They meet again on Monday and then it would come back. Their recommendation would come back to you all on your twenty third, on April thirteenth, twenty third.
Okay, so we're skipping that?
Right.
Okay. All right. All right, so you've closed your hearing?
Yep.
Do they need to adjourn their planning commission now, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I guess they're adjourned unless anybody has anything else. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel.
All right, item four, consider a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property at three twenty-one Lee Street. Open the hearing. Staff comment?
Counsel, we received an offer on three twenty-one Lee Street a little over a month ago initially, and then we went through some counter offers back and forth with the proposed purchaser. They have now given an offer of fifteen thousand dollars for three twenty-one Lee Street, which is located almost directly across the street from where we're sitting right now. This property was a property that was listed for sale back on February twenty-seventh of two thousand and eighteen. A resolution was passed on the procedures to be used when an offer is received on April the tenth of two thousand and eighteen. A public hearing on this offer was advertised on April the first of nineteen and also on April the eighth of two thousand and nineteen, which complies with the resolution of procedures that we passed back in April of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. All right, no one signed up for public comment on this item. Any counsel questions at all? All right, we close the hearing. All right, now we'll consider a public hearing on the ordinance to convey lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine at Falls Phase Three to the Industrial Development Authority Bristol, Virginia. Hereby open the hearing. Staff comment?
Counsel, this ordinance will authorize the conveyance of lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine of the Falls to be conveyed to the Industrial Development Authority. In a request, the I D A convey the lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight to the Falls Acquisition LLC and lot twenty-nine to Interstate Development Partners LLC when all due diligence has been met.
All right, no one signed up for public comment on this item? All right, hereby close the hearing. All right, item six, consider approval of offer received on three-two-one Lee Street. Staff report, any additional items?
The only thing additional on this I would offer is, as it was noted in the contract that was sent to you all a week or so ago, there is a commission fee that we would pay to Prestige Homes of three percent, which would be four hundred and fifty dollars for that offer.
Okay, it was pleasure counsel.
Remove that we approved the offer as, as presented to us.
Okay, motion, Mr. Osborn, to approve or accept the offer as presented?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnham, any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item seven, consider first reading of an ordinance to convey lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine at the Falls Phase Three to the Industrial Development Authority Bristol, Virginia. Staff report?
Counsel, only thing I would add in addition to what was previously presented was the city council did approve the plat for the division of these lots on March the twenty-sixth of two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, need a motion, a second for the first reading of the ordinance?
Move to approve the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Osborn, second, Mr. Hartley, any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, item A, report from treasurer's.
We need to read the ordinance.
I'm sorry, go ahead and read it.
Ordinance to convey the lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine is described on a plat entitled the Falls Phase Three Lots twenty-six through thirty-two Lee Highway at the city of Bristol, state of Virginia, to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia. Whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia here and after the city acquired a number of parcels of land located on Lee Highway near exit five off of Interstate eighty-one in the city of Bristol, Virginia. And whereas the city has partnered with the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, Falls Acquisitions LLC and Interstate Development Partners LLC through a development agreement for the development of a retail shopping center commonly referred to as the Falls. And whereas the city has caused a portion of the property to be subdivided as shown on a plat entitled the Falls Phase Three Lots twenty-six through thirty-two Lee Highway, the city of Bristol, state of Virginia, which will be recorded in the office of the clerk of Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia prior to the transfer of any lots located therein. And whereas the city wishes to transfer to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia here and after the I D A, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine is described on the aforementioned plat, and now therefore be it ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the city shall transfer to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine of that property as will be more particularly described on a survey entitled the Falls Phase Three Lots twenty-six through thirty-two Lee Highway, the city of Bristol, state of Virginia, to be recorded in the office of the clerk of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia, prior to the transfer of any lots located therein. And be it further ordained that the city requests the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, accept the property and transfer it to Falls Acquisitions LLC and Interstate Development Partners LLC in accord with the party's development agreement at such time as to be determined at the discretion of the I D A Falls Acquisition LLC and Interstate Development Partners LLC. First reading, April ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay. All right, next, report of treasurer's office on delinquent tax collections.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for this opportunity to share with you some details on the collections of our delinquent real estate and personal property taxes. Upon taking office in two thousand and ten, I became aware that the city had over three million dollars in delinquent personal property and real estate taxes on the books. So I am pleased to report today that as of March thirty-first, we had four hundred forty-seven thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents in delinquent real estate and four hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents in delinquent personal property. So that totals one point five million dollars. Delinquent real estate taxes are at ninety-nine point five percent collected and delinquent personal property taxes are at ninety-six percent collected. My focus collections efforts are on the personal property at this time. We have taxes that are collected for personal property up to five years. So two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are collectible now. My attention has been focused on the ones that are one and a half years delinquent up to four and a half years delinquent. Personal property consists of business fixtures, machine tools, vehicles, trailers, and mobile homes. So let me put this into numbers for you. On the oldest taxes, the two thousand fourteen through the seventeens, a total of seventeen million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-three cents was assessed by the commissioner of revenue. As of March thirty-first, four hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars was still outstanding on those taxes that were due back to two thousand fourteen. Recent changes to the code of Virginia now authorize the treasurer to public delinquent list. This is one of the many collection tools that the code allows the treasurer to do to collect the revenue for the city. In conformity with Virginia Code, section fifty-eight dot one, thirty-nine, twenty-four, I will publish in the Bristol Herald Courier, a list of all the non-payment personal property tax that have been delinquent back to two thousand fourteen up through the two thousand seventeen year. To avoid publication, payment must be posted in the treasurer's office on May first of two thousand nineteen. Code of Virginia fifty-eight dot one, thirty-nine, twenty-one authorizes the publication of all delinquent taxpayers at the end of fiscal year. A list of all the two thousand eighteen taxes that were due on December fifth and all the prior year's delinquents. And keep in mind, real estate is collected for twenty years. So we'll be going back to nineteen ninety-eight. So the real estate and personal property taxes will be published on the city's website, bristleva.org, when the books are closed out at the end of fiscal year on June thirtieth. In summary, the tax collections are good and the city is able to meet its financial obligations. However, with seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars in uncollected personal property tax, there is more to be collected. This list will serve as another notification to delinquent taxpayers and it will also be a catalyst for parents and grandparents and friends of those who have not paid their debt to the city to help out possibly. Our last delinquent notices were mailed out on January the sixteenth to address the personal property delinquency issue. We have also just completed a special mailing for the purpose of contacting the people who had a division of motor vehicle stop issued in two thousand seventeen that was not paid yet. So they got a special letter. The last were mailed out on Tuesday. No, this Tuesday, Monday. So everyone has been notified. And just for the record, the people that owe two thousand fourteen taxes have been mailed at least ten notices. Any questions?
So what you're saying in summary is this, you're kind of trying to tell the community that, you know, this is kind of your last notice because your name's going to end up in the paper. You're going to publish all the names of everybody's got delinquent taxes, both property and real estate. And so this is kind of your last chance to understand that's going to happen. So if you don't want your name in print, then you better go pay your taxes because it's about to happen. So I wanted her to make sure one last time everybody understood this, you know, this is it. So they've mailed out notices and so now there, there are going to be an advertisement in the paper and your name next to, you know, your amount or whatever, however they add reads is going to be in the, in the Herald Courier. So I would suggest you pay your taxes like you're supposed to and avoid the embarrassment and everything that goes with having your name in the paper. But that's what's next, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can you reiterate when the deadline for someone to be current so they don't have their name published is? I think you said by May first?
May first. All payments must be posted. And I would like to note that credit card payments received online and via the telephone, that system takes two days for that funds, for those funds to hit the city's bank accounts. So those would need to be made two days prior to May the first.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right, presentation of city manager's fiscal nineteen twenty recommended budget.
Good evening, council. Tonight is the, my recommended budget for the fiscal year nineteen twenty for the city of Bristol, Virginia. As we start this process tonight, I want to remind everyone, this is the presentation. We will be able to have detailed discussions on all these items through our two-on-two work sessions that we have scheduled for next week, plus any workshops that we will schedule here in the future. And I want to reiterate that the code of Virginia states that a budget is an informative, informative and fiscal planning purposes only. It contains a complete itemized and classified plan of all contemplated expenditures and all estimated revenues and borrowings for the locality for the ensuing fiscal year. The budget remains a working document throughout the process. It's based on historical data, trends, and projections. I'd like to recap in fiscal year nineteen, some of the important things that we have done in regards to fiscal responsibility. We've implemented a critical financial policy and developed capital funding plan. We've had a landfill analysis done. That analysis is to show us how to make the solid waste disposal fund self-sufficient, which is also a goal of city council and also a goal of mine. Also, we implemented the judicial alternative sentencing program. You can see over the course of, since August of last year, roughly thirty-three hundred days, or close to thirty-four hundred days have been saved from people being incarcerated in our jail for a cost avoidance of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in inmate housing expense. Ambulance service began in August of two thousand and eighteen and our EMS has responded to more than a thousand calls. Also, State Street and the Comprehensive Plan Awards. The State Street received a Great Places in America Award by the American Planning Association. And then our Common, Comprehensive Plan was awarded the Commonwealth Plan of the Year by the Virginia Planning Association. And finally, as I mentioned earlier, our animal shelter opened last week in April of two thousand and nineteen. I want to recap our goals that council has set for this year. One is maintain the reserve funds, have a structurally balanced budget, consider ways to have the jail annex renovated, have a self-sustaining solid waste disposal fund, maintain the unassigned fund balance, adequate funding for the C V B or Discover Bristol, invest in our employees, full staffing for police and fire departments, provide support to the school system, economic, financial, economic development, financial tools, grow the top line, and also long-term reserve funds and establishing and funding those reserve, our funds. So here's the framework that we use as we develop this budget starting back in January. One, we know that we want, as a management team, we want to have a structurally balanced and financially sound budget. We want to maintain and invest in our important assets in the city. And we want to promote the self-sufficiency of the solid waste disposal fund. And this budget meets every one of those goals. And I believe it meets every one of the goals that is set here before us tonight. This is a summary of all our funds. It includes our general fund, our solid waste disposal fund, and our capital fund. You can see our total revenues are seventy-two million dollars. Our general fund accounts for seventy-five percent of that seventy-two million at fifty-three point nine million. Our capital projects fund is thirteen percent at nine point one million. Our solid waste disposal fund is at eleven percent at seven point eight nine million. Our community development block grant fund is a little over one percent at five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Our transit fund is a, it's always been in our general fund. It is now separate, something that we are doing this year, which is something that should have been done in the past, has a budget of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And our asset forfeiture fund is a little less than one percent at a hundred and two thousand dollars. Revenues by source, which is all funds combined, local sources is fifty percent of where we derive our revenue. The state gives twenty-four percent, federal government twelve percent, solid waste eleven percent, other financing sources is one percent, C D B G is at one percent, transit one percent, and the asset forfeiture fund is less than one percent. Expenditures by all, by category between all funds, public safety takes up twenty-one percent, capital projects is thirteen percent, health and welfare is twelve percent, solid waste is eleven percent, education nine percent, public works seven percent, debt six percent, transfers are five percent, parks four percent, government administration four percent, judicial administration three percent, non-departmental one percent, community development one percent, along with C D B G and transit, and once again, asset forfeiture is less than one percent. Here's a budget comparison from this current fiscal year that we're in compared to the upcoming fiscal year. You can see our general fund budget for fiscal year nineteen was fifty-one point five million dollars. In fiscal year twenty, it is fifty-three point nine million dollars for an increase of two point three three six million dollars, which is four and a half percent. The major drivers behind this increase in costs are associated with the budget goals that have been enunciated by council and also by the management team. One is employee compensation, which accounts for three hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. General fund transfer to the capital fund of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is significant for the city because in the past, we have not been able to fund the capital fund. And this is the first time in an extended period of time where there's been a significant investment in our capital fund. And a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars are some critical I T needs. The majority of the remainder of the associated increases have a revenue offset. So now let's talk about the general fund. Revenue sources for the general fund, the federal or local is thirty-five point, thirty-five million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Revenue sources for the general fund, the federal or local is 35 point, $35,819,000. State is $14,954,000. The federal is a little over $3 million and other sources is at $76,250. Here is another breakdown of our expenditures, just based on general fund. You can see the public safety is at 29%. Health and welfare, social services is 16%. Education 12, public works 10. Debt is at 8%. Transfers at 6%. Parks and rec 6%. Government administration at 5%. Judicial administration 4%. Non-departmental is 2% and community development is 2%. Here are some of the major drivers and changes in revenues. Revenues that increased was prior debt savings of $437,324. That is debt savings that we had from the 1718 refinance. Our general, total general property taxes increased by $591,565. Other local taxes are projected to increase by $700,201. Court costs $128,400 and that is mainly associated with the judicial assistance alternative sentencing program. And then our state revenue increased by $680,000. The majority of that is dedicated to social services. You can see our federal revenue decreased by $306,000. The majority of that is grants that we have not yet been awarded. Once we do receive those awards, we can appropriate those at that time. Miscellaneous revenue is down $74,744. Permits and privilege fees down by $24,550. Changes in expenditures, the judicial alternative sentencing program will be budgeted at $526,346 this year. $399,000 of that is the net increase to local funding. Social services increased by $403,000. $34,000 of that is net increase to local funding. There's a 3% salary increase and a scale placement increase for a total of $345,539. There's a 3% comp board increase for constitutional offices. That's at $97,124 and the majority of that is offset by state funding. Increase in full-time employees of $80,800. That full-time employee is part of that employee is code compliance, which will be offset by CDBG funding. The next is to the information technology and also to, to engineering where they will share an employee. Economic development incentives is $66,500 increase from last year. That goes to the economic development piece for Hotel Bristol and for the Euclid Center. IT equipment is, critical needed IT equipment $50,751. Also Discover Bristol, an increase of $50,000 in this year's budget from last year's budget. The contingency fund increased as well by roughly $26,596. Maintenance of building and property by $25,000. Clear Creek has an expenditure increase of $25,000. However, there is an offset in revenue for, that is now being charged at Clear Creek where when a golfer golfs, there is a dollar charge, which will then be put aside specifically for capital needs improvements at the golf course. There's a citywide copying and printing lease consolidation, which is an increase of $22,800. Software for public safety of $22,000. EMS supplies $21,000. The voting registrar has an operating increase of $19,050 and that's due to the fact there were four elections in this upcoming fiscal year for her. There are two primary elections and then there will also be two general elections. And also the Ford Trade Zone fees, we've talked about this probably since late last fall. We do have a business here in Bristol that really needs for us to be part of the FTZ that we withdrew from in the spring of 17. I'd mentioned that to you all in the past and I believe everybody was in agreement to move forward with that project. Now we'll talk about the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools. Fiscal year 19 budget, we funded the schools $6.686 million. We did not have anything set aside for capital. The requested budget from the school system this year was a little over $7 million with $14.4 million for capital needs. And in this year's budget, we kept it at level funding at $6.686 million. We all know that there's capital needs at the school system and this is going to be an issue as we move forward through this budget of how to deal with those capital needs and what's going to make the best sense for the city and the school system. Want to update everyone in regards to the falls. This has been something that has been at the forefront of the news since 2012 when the falls was announced. And I think it's important not only that you all are updated in regards to the falls, but also the public is made aware of what is going on at the falls. And remember, this is for phases two and three. The total falls revenue in this current fiscal year was $470,000. And this fiscal year's upcoming budget that will increase to $826,000. The total debt that is allocated to the falls is $1.8 million this year. This upcoming year, it'll be a little over $2 million. We have the revenue sharing agreement for the loads that moved from the county into the city, $350,000. And I believe we have six payments left on that, in that agreement at this point. It's a little over 1.7 million, I think that is still owed to Washington County for that loads transfer into the city based on a threat of lawsuit. So this current fiscal year, there was a revenue shortfall of $1.684 million. This upcoming year, there will be a shortfall of $1.5 million. So we reduced the deficit by a total of $117,622. If you keep that up over the next 15 years, the falls would eventually break even. So hopefully we can shorten that down to the next couple of three years where the falls phase two and three will make enough to cover the debt associated with the falls. Our debt service reserve account. In last year's budget, we appropriated $1.187 million for the debt reserve account. Out of that $1.187 million, a piece of that was saved from the refinancing that we did in the spring of 17 and 18. This current fiscal year's budget will put a little over a million dollars into the debt service reserve account. This is a graph that has been presented to council on at least two previous occasions of how do we get from where we are today to where we need to be in 24, in 2025. You can see our debt service in this current fiscal year is at $4.8 million and over the course of the next seven years, increases all the way up to $7.7 million. You can see that we have savings that we will be using in order to meet that first big jump in fiscal year 21 and we'll need an additional $39,395 to meet that debt payment in fiscal year 21. In fiscal year 22, that debt reserve that we have in our budget now will now be shifted over to pay for a piece of that debt increase, which will leave us short $291,000 in fiscal year 22. And 23 is the big jump where we have to find an additional half a million dollars that will go to service the debt. And then in fiscal year 24, from the previous year, we'll need an additional $150,000. And then in fiscal year 25, the debt payment decreases slightly, which gives us a positive variance of $2,375. This, this slide here is very important. It follows right along with some of the important financial policies that we've put in place over the past year. Our general obligation debt as a percentage of the assessed value. Our policy goal is 5% is what our general obligation debt should be as a percentage of our assessed value. In fiscal year 17 and 18, you see the actual numbers that were 8.37 and 8.38%. We are projecting that general obligation debt to decrease slightly to 8.34% this year. And then in fiscal year 20, the upcoming one, it will decrease even more to 8.07%. Debt as a percentage of the operating expenditures per fund. The policy goal for the operating fund is 8%. You can see in fiscal year 17 and 18, we were at 5.7% and 3.93% in fiscal year 18. Fiscal year 19, it's projected will be at 6.38%. And fiscal year 20, it will be projected to be at 7.48%, which is still less than the 8% policy goal. Solid waste disposal fund is also at 8%. You can clearly see that we were nowhere near that goal. We go anywhere from 25% up to 35% in the projection for this fiscal year. And fiscal year 20, we're at 29.51%. Our unassigned fund, fund balance, which I think is probably one of the most important things the city has done in recent memory, we've set a policy goal of 18% of our general fund should be set aside for the unassigned fund balance. Fiscal year 17 is at 13.3%. We increased it in fiscal year 18 last year to 24.3%. This current fiscal year, we're projected to be at 26.81%. And in fiscal year 20, we would be projected to be at 26.93%. This is significant for the city. It allows us to have cash on hand in order to pay bills in times of potential economic slowdowns. So I think it's very important that we maintain no less than that 18%. And I would encourage this council to always try to do a little bit better than the goal. In my mind, the goal is just a minimum. Solid waste disposal fund. First thing I want to talk about is the total cost of the city. You all have seen this previously. Outstanding general obligation debt. And I want you all to remember too, this is a fund that typically averages as about a $6 million a year budget. And over the course of the life of the city or the landfill, it has cost the city $77.2 million on a $6 million budget. And this is how that breaks down. You have a general obligation debt of $34.7 million. Once again, you have debt of $34.7 million on a $6 million a year budget. Transfers from the general fund that were written off in 2016 because there was no feasible way the solid waste disposal fund could pay that back of $22.1 million. There was a net position of, on June 30th of 18, of negative $20 million for the total cost of the city at $77.2 million. So fiscal year 20 budget, the recommended rate is $33 a month to residential customers. You can see that the revenues for fiscal year 20 are projected to be at 3.3 million, collection revenue at 2.7 million, non-operating revenue at 1.8 million, for a total revenue of 7.8 million. Our expenses on the disposal side, which is the actual landfill, is at 4.5 million. The collection expense, which is the, which is the division that goes around and picks up city residents' waste at $931,000. Non-operating expenses, which is mainly debt, is $2.38 million for total expenses of $7.88 million. You can see that the $33 a month rate is option four that I presented previously on March the 16th. The $33 rate will allow us to purchase $1.852 million of liner. It will allow the city to put aside $200,000 for post-closure enclosure costs. I would also suggest that $200,000 is not sufficient for where we need to be in regards for where we need to be on the post-closure enclosure. I want to make sure everyone understands right here, in this current fiscal year, we are not setting aside funds for liner accrual because we're buying the liner this year. So in 2021, this $33 a month rate will allow us to set aside $600,000 for a liner and we can continue to do that in the following years as well. And the future closures would allow us to set aside $305,000 for those accruals. Cash carryover would also be needed from 1920 of $300,000. Capital projects fund, this is something I'm very proud of in regards to what we're doing as a management team here in the city in order to ensure that our equipment lasts and that the projects we do are being appropriately funded. Earlier this year, let's see, earlier this year, we developed a capital improvement committee, which included myself, the CFO, director of public works, the chief of police, the fire chief, the sheriff, and the information technology manager. Department worksheets were sent to all city departments, which we required them to submit their capital needs. Departments completed and submitted those capital needs to the finance department and the department head presented and, at their request to the committee. The committee ranked the items that required local money and reviewed the rankings. Annual cutoffs were established based on the local funds that are available for the capital project and the plan was developed. On the project assessment form, these are the items that we considered as to how we scored those needs. One, does the project contribute to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens? Two, does the project need to, is the project needed in order to comply with local, state, or federal law? Three, is the project needed to conform to an adopted program, policy, or plan? I can't count. Number four, I think now, project remedies an existing or a projected deficiency within the department or within the city? The project contributes to long-term needs of the community? What is the service area of the project, i.e. is it a regional initiative, a citywide initiative, or is it neighborhood specific? Is the project a department priority? Does the project deliver a level of service desired by the community? What is the project funding stream, i.e. is it funded through federal, state, local, or debt dollars? Does it comply with the city vision? So that was how we ranked each one of these projects. You have seen those capital plan projects ranked previously. I do not have that here on the slide, but you can see over the course of the next five to six years, how that breakdown was and what each project was. So let's talk about this year's total capital projects fund. It will be funded by debt capital of close to $100,000. This is a piece of debt that has to be expended by November of 2019 and it is debt that was acquired in November of 2016 when the city issued $6 million in new debt. There was a transfer of the general fund of $625,000. Once again, that's something I'm extremely proud to say because we need certain projects and equipment here in the city that has not ever been able to be funded appropriately. It was always funded with debt. Now we are going to be setting up a rotation to deal with our equipment on a cash basis. State funds of 2.6 million, federal funds of 5.8 million, total capital project fund of $9.1 million. Here's the detail of this breakdown. The mobile data terminals and docks for vehicles is going to be purchased with debt capital of $99,000. The police fleet rotation, as I mentioned previously, we have 21 vehicles pass their useful life in the police department and we will start a rotation of purchasing several vehicles this year. And over the next six years, I believe we'll have most of the vehicles in the police department replaced. And this year, they will receive $226,000. There's also the need for a radio repeater, which is a cost of $9,800. You can see all of that will be local funding of $235,000. The fire department, their heart monitors and defibrillators are out of date. Not that they don't work, they just need newer, newer equipments. I don't want to think anybody that's having a heart attack, we can't take care of them, but we do need to update that equipment. It's $172,000. There is a radio system that the fire department needs of $358,000. Fire hose of $85,000 and a mobile data terminal of $44,000. You can see locally, $320,000. That is city money and the feds are picking up $340,000. Here's the capital funds, project funds detail. You have Lee Highway Phase 1B, which is exit five of $5.15 million. There's a shared use path from Overhill to Clover, which is right there on Lee Highway of $195,600. The Goodson Street Bridge Rehab Project of $375,000. Kingsmill Pike near North Star Baptist Church, we will be acquiring a portion of that land and straightening out that curve. That is probably one of the most accident-prone areas in the city for $401,000. There'll also be a shared use path on Bonham Road of $885,000. The Signal at Bob Morrison in Euclid to be, will be replaced at $424,000. The Martin Luther King Bridge Rehab of $185,000. Fairview Street Bridge Rehab of $280,000. And the Lee Highway Old Airport Intersection is going to be revamped over the next several years. This is just the initial installment for plans for engineering to get that process started of $280,000. The local piece out of this entire project is only $69,000. The state will support $2.6 million and the federal, federal government will pay $5.4 million. So what's next? April 16th, we have April sixteenth, we have a called city council meeting for a public hearing on the collection fees ordinance. That's next Tuesday at six P M. On April twenty-third, two weeks from tonight, we will have the public hearing on the appropriation ordinance and the first reading of the collection fee ordinance. On April the thirtieth, there is a called city council meeting for the second reading of the collection fees ordinance. May the fourteenth, there is a regular city council meeting for the first reading of the appropriation ordinance. On May the twenty-third, there will be a second reading, or May twenty-eighth, I'm sorry. There will be a second reading of the appropriation ordinance, which would mean we would pass the budget on May the twenty-eighth. I would like to point out that there was a budget workshop scheduled for April twenty-seventh. We have temporarily removed that from the calendar simply because we had to push this back. I would leave that up to council as if we want to continue that workshop on the twenty-seventh or if we want to push that back to another date. I know there were a couple of folks that mentioned to me today they would rather have that on a Tuesday night rather than on a Saturday. So that's something that can be discussed amongst yourselves. And that is my presentation for the city budget. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, but as I started out, remember, we do have two-on-twos in the upcoming week to go over this. You have the budget book in front of you so that you can look over it over the next week before we start meeting in detail. And we will also have workshops in order to deal with some of the issues that are upcoming.
Any comments or questions?
Just a comment, I think I know the answer, but just for the record, you will make this available tomorrow morning?
It'll be available online at eight A M. on the Finance Department page.
So I don't have anything in-depth right now, but I'd just like to thank you and thank the CFO and thank Nicole for all the work you've put into this. This is no easy task to make everything equal out like it should, so I really appreciate what I.
I'll be the first to admit this wouldn't happen if it wasn't without these two in the department heads. I'm just the mouthpiece that conveys this information to you all.
At least you're aware.
I am.
Just a couple of quick things. On the, on the collection rates, that was for citizens only?
On.
Was for the citizens only?
That was for the citizens only, that's correct.
So are we going to see a?
You will see a.
Business rate?
You will at next, what, April sixteenth? We will, I'll, I'll have all that out before, to you all before then. Remember, April sixteenth is just a public hearing on the matter so that then people can come and voice their concerns or support for that rate change on April the sixteenth.
The last item, we had a finance committee meeting, and we, you know, last council meeting, we talked about we had roughly fourteen-and-a-half million dollars of cash, and we accounted for all of it with the exception of maybe a million, million-two. But we are up to about sixteen-six projected for the end of this fiscal year. So, so we'd like to see at least a summary slide of where we are on that excess cash availability and how that's going to play into this budget to make sure we take care of what the school system needs are and what the public safety vehicle needs are. So we've got to understand, is that a two-million-dollar number, which I think it is? And if so, how are we going to take that too? And what are we going to do as far as paying cash for liner, applying it for capital for police cars, applying it for capital needs for ADA in the schools, you know, the bathrooms and all that kind of stuff? So we need to take, see that excess and make sure we've got that detailed out of how we intend to apply those funds. Any other questions? Okay. All right, so no other questions? I guess we had one person wanted to come up. Jackie, did you want to come up and talk at this point?
Mr. Mayor, you asked if my question was to a less vague.
Okay, all right. All right, the next item is consider resolution establishing the F I. Nineteen-twenty real property tax rate. Staff report.
I counsel, I've lost it. Hang on just a second. Yeah, I've got it. Counsel, the, in your packet, you found the resolution for the real property tax rate. In years past, we have, as a city, we have not put this into place in the appropriate amount of time in order to work with the treasurer for when she gets the bills out. And I believe she is going to send the tax bills out tomorrow. Is that right?
I'll be filed, I'll close tomorrow, I'll be getting the file to go over to the bureau, so it'll be, it'll be the day that.
Okay. So what you find, what you have in your packet is a resolution to establish a real property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, or twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. I would recommend that we leave the tax rate at a dollar-seventeen per one-hundred of the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate, mobile home, and public utilities at one-hundred percent of the fair market value.
Okay. So a dollar-seventeen, which is what it was last year, correct?
Yes.
All right, anybody, no one signed up for public comment on this item? All right. You read the ordinance?
Resolution establishment of real property tax rate for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Whereas section fifteen-point-two hyphen twenty-five oh-three of the Code of Virginia requires the governing bodies of every locality in the Commonwealth to prepare and approve a budget for the ensuing fiscal year and to fix a tax rate for the calendar year no later than the first date of the fiscal year. And whereas the City of Bristol, Virginia collects real property taxes on a semi-annual basis, which requires that the tax rate be fixed by the governing body early enough to allow preparation of invoices for the first installment payment, which is due annually no later than June the fifth. However, the tax rate for personal property, machinery and tools, and other such taxes the city council may impose shall be collected with the second installment of real property taxes, which are billed at a later date and due to be paid annually no later than December fifth. And whereas the city council for the City of Bristol, Virginia has received funding requests from the city's officers and heads of departments and agencies for inclusion in the budget for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. And whereas the city council has reviewed during work session meetings prior to this date of this resolution, such requests and estimates of anticipated city revenues from local and intergovernmental sources for fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. And whereas, based on these actions, the city council is prepared to fix the real estate property tax rate for calendar year twenty-nineteen, but will delay action to set the rate for personal property, machinery and tools, and other such taxes as the city council may impose to a later date, but no later than the first date of the upcoming fiscal year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Bristol, Virginia that the unit tax levy on real property in calendar year twenty-nineteen is hereby set as follows. A citywide unit levy for general city purposes and school purposes of one-dollar-and-seventeen cents per one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation of all taxable real estate, mobile home, and public utilities at one-hundred percent of fair market value. Be it further resolved that the unit tax levies on taxable tangible personal property, taxable machinery and tools, and other such levies as the city council shall impose for fiscal year twenty-nineteen shall be set at the time of adoption of the city budget, not later than June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
All right, it's pleasure, counsel.
Move that we, we approve the resolution to set the tax, the property tax rate.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
No, I will just say that it's good to get this ahead in the past. A lot of times, as city manager pointed out, we've done this along with adopting the budget. And when you do it later in the year, especially if you change the rate, which we're not this year, but it creates a lot of confusion for the treasurer's office, for people with mortgages, just a lot of confusion. So it's good to get ahead of this for a change as far as the process.
All right, I will say, at least my thought is that we have a little bit of time here where we've got to continue to get the city's finances clearly going in the right direction. They are moving positive, but we've got to make sure of that. So at least my long-term vision and plan is that the real estate tax rate will come down. You know, we as a city are too high compared to the size of Bristol, Virginia. So that is the long-term plan. Now, we just have to go at it very easy and make sure that we understand where we are with our debt service. We've got to see where we are with the development of the falls and how the top-line revenues, if they continue to come in unabated and they continue to grow, then, then if we step back and two years go by, we're in a much better position. Now, we're making all of our payments, and we see that twenty-twenty-three is taken care of. Then, you know, we can start to consider pulling that, that real estate tax rate back where it belongs. And I, you know, my number is it belongs somewhere around a dollar-eight to a dollar-ten for the City of Bristol, Virginia. That's, you know, for our size city, that's kind of where it belongs. But we're quite a bit higher than that because we've got such a debt load. But anyway, I'll say that as we talk about this going forward, just so the citizens know that's the way we're talking and thinking. So your input's obviously welcome. All right, any other comments? All right. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, what's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented with two changes to the minutes. On March the twelfth, it says presiding mayor Kevin Mumpower-Wingard, that you strike Wingard. And on the March twenty-third meeting, it says the meeting started at nine o'clock. It started at eight-thirty.
You didn't know I changed my name? You didn't know I had a name change?
What do you mean?
I changed my name.
Oh, you did? I was unaware of that then.
All right, any other changes? So a couple typographical changes there on the minutes? Any other discussion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the changes presented.
All right, motion, Mr. Osborne, second.
I second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, hereby adjourned.